Mr. Patrick, can you make some clarification?
Stand. I'd like to point something out to you. Jamie, our chairman, always has something on the board. And that is Jamie's. And it looks good. Look for something positive in each day, even if some days you have to look a little harder. Let's bow our heads and pray. Lord gracious, heavenly Father, help us all here to realize, even when things don't quite go our way and days aren't quite as good, we are still a blessed people. We are so blessed, Lord, to have the opportunity to call you by name and to know you here and know you love us and look after us. Lord, thank you for everyone in this building, in this meeting, their interests, Lord. We just ask that you would just bless them in a special way. And I pray for unity, Lord, between all of us. I pray for these commissioners beside me, that we will stand for what's best for the county, but more than that, what's best for you. Thank you, Lord, and give us wisdom. We praise you and thank you and ask these, all of these things in Christ's precious name. Amen.
Please join me, please pray, you start from the beginning. I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As soon as this gets started on unfinished business, Commissioner, we have a couple of items that kind of get us today at the last minute and need to add two items to the agenda. The first one is for our next meeting in November. So I'll make a motion to amend the current agenda to add discussion on our next meeting. I'll make that motion.
Number 11, that one?
Yeah, that will be number 11.
All right.
And I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And the second item we need to be, which we will put is number 12, is we'll, we need to amend the agenda to talk about our current software, which is Casell, and Patrick Cook, sorry, Patrick. Patrick Cook will be talking to us a little bit about that. So I'll make that motion as well, that we add Patrick Cook and our Casell software to the agenda as number 12. I'll make that motion and ask for a second. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. So under unfinished business, number two would be approve the minutes of October 26th, 2021, to regular scheduled board meeting. Commissioner, sir, any errors or omissions?
No, sir.
Commissioner Patrick?
I have none, thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the October 26th, 2021, regular scheduled board meeting. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Also, under unfinished business, number three, is a board discussion on shelf pro software equipment for Panon County Animal Control. This item is made table from our October 26th meeting. Just to kind of give you as an idea, gentlemen, we actually did find something that was going to benefit us, so I'd like to remove this from any further business, as we did find something that's going to be free for our county. So we're thankful for that. So I'll make a motion that we remove this particular discussion of software for animal control. I'll make that motion and ask for a second.
A second.
All in favor?
You can tell us a little bit about it?
Yeah, sure we'll. It's a company called Pet Pro. We've been going back and forth with them for quite some time. Patrick and Ms. Turick have been pretty instrumental in getting this going. There is a setup fee, which is $1,500, which is within their budget to do so this year. And the additional cost, from my understanding, is going to be free, and it will do everything that we've needed to do at this time. So we're thankful for that and appreciate Patrick and Ms. Turick for their hard work in finding this software for us. I do believe it's going to be more efficient for us going down the road, and it's just going to help us out tremendously.
And it's free.
And it's free. And there was a commissioner that once said, "If it's free, it's for me."
That's right.
And if I picked that up from him, I'm thankful for him as well. So any further discussion on number three?
It'll help them stay organized over there.
Most definitely.
Keep things on par. Okay?
Yep. Okay. Unfinished business, number four. It's EMS Director Becky Hupman with the big proposals for our ambulances.
This was put in for these other ambulances that were available. We'd already had it out, and then once we put these bids out, then we wound up sending those other two that y'all already approved. These were just left over from that.
And the, correct me if I'm wrong, so the two that we voted to buy previously, one was actually for 2021.
Yes.
The second one would be for 2022.
Right.
And the third, which this, was for 2023.
Yeah, they, the, that was why we went and asked for the other two, was because the chances, because of the chassis being on back order and having to ship them, and a lot, that's why we only wound up, we reached out to some of the other, and asked for big packages, and we asked them why they didn't put them in yet, and they said, "Because their backlog's so much, because the chassis are on hold, that they don't have any more, because they're so far out." And they're saying that it's probably going to be 2023 before the chassis are even available for them. So more than likely, if y'all were to approve this, it's probably, it's not going to be ready until 2023.
What's that going to do for your fleet?
Will be where we need to be, and since we're getting away from taking as many transfers out of town, I'm hoping that we will be set for a while. We've been having to replace med units once a year because of the mileage and the wear and tear on them, mostly for the fact that we're taking transfers that put around 400, 500 miles to come on the med units. With us getting away from taking the non-emergency stuff and everything, it's going to cut back on the mileage on the med units and the wear and tear. So hopefully, once we replace the three that need to be replaced, which is the two that y'all already agreed to purchase, and then if we purchase this additional one for 2023, we don't have to take one until they actually receive delivery of them. So if we were to purchase either one of these, which I'd like to open these and then take them back and look at them, and maybe come back at another meeting and see if, make sure these meet our requirements and stuff like that. But we won't take delivery probably till 2023, and then our fleet will be where it needs to be, and hopefully we won't be purchasing med units every year, it'll at least span them out too.
Might be every other year.
Every other year. If, hopefully, Flanders Cross, it would be every three years. But it just depends on how well the trucks hold up.
How many you have?
We have four full-time med units, and then we have three reserves. And we're pretty good now. We've gotten all of one of our reserve trucks up to where we can actually run at seven. We've decided, since y'all purchased the other one, we're not going to put the extra money in to fix them, the air ride system that's in it, we're just going to leave it the way it is and use it for events, because most of our events, we don't transport from the other med units come, they're just there for football games and stuff like that. So they stay on the premises, they never transport, so there's really no need to worry about the air ride system and that. And then once it's done, once our two new med units come in, Patrick's got use for one, and Zach approached me about having the other one. So we're going to repurpose those in the county, the two that we're getting.
When were your other two?
They say that it'll be the first quarter of next year, so we're looking at probably February, maybe March before they're ready. We will have to fly out for the, either fly out, they're going to fly us out there to pick them up, or we'll have to drive out there and bring them back.
Or is it out there?
Indiana, I believe.
Over there.
Yeah.
About a 10, 11-hour drive.
Yeah. So more than likely, it'll be a flight up there, but we might inspect them and everything before they get down here, so we're going to smoke them over real good and make sure that they're in the shape that we need before we bring them back. But the facilities that work on those trucks are actually closer, it's in North Carolina. It's just the production part of it is, is a little bit further out, but the underwork on the spare.
My fault, sorry. Okay.
The first one was from First Class Emergency Vehicles, which is a division of First Class Fire Apparatus LLC, and I share that because it took me a minute to marry up the bond. Their unit price delivered is $158,500. And the other one is from Custom Truck and Body Works Incorporated, and the unit price is $181,329,000. Both of them do have their bonds with them. As to specifications, I would have to defer to somebody that knows a whole lot more than me.
So when you purchase an ambulance, does, like, what all comes with it?
It's just the chassis and the box. It's got everything.
So we have to put all the equipment on it?
Yes, all the equipment has to be put on it. Y'all purchased the stretchers already, that's what we purchased with the Spaw, with Spaw and that stuff. So if we're good on stretchers, they'll just, what we're doing is we'll take the stretchers that are on the med units currently, and they'll be placed, the new ones will be placed on the new med units. And then we just rotate them out like that. We've got all the equipment, pretty much, it's just transferred from the med unit that's being replaced, the safety with med one. They'll take their equipment off of that truck, put it on to the new truck, and then the spare truck that's being took out of service will pull the equipment off of it and put it on to the old med one. It'll be put into that truck. So there's no new equipment that'll really have to be purchased. With our power stretchers, we've already got the strips that we need for the mountain, for the mountain, for the power stretchers, and it's just moved from one truck to the other. That's already been purchased, so there's no extra cost to the county after we purchase the med unit, because the equipment's already there off the trucks that we currently have in service.
So what's the difference? How come, how come this guy here is $158,000, the other company's $181,000? What's the big?
I'm not real sure, I haven't had a chance to look at the bids yet, since they, I don't really know what the difference in them two. The two are medics is, or the one that is the first class, is what we currently purchased the other two med units.
That's a medics?
Well, it's a medics truck.
Oh, okay.
There's different boxes and stuff like that. The dealer is first class, but the boxes are medics.
Have we ever dealt with any of these companies?
We've dealt with a couple of them. Custom Works is who we have used in the past.
That was the first bid?
Second.
Custom Work was the higher second bid.
Medics is the one that we went with this time, or First Class is the one that we went with this time for the other two trucks that we just purchased, for the $148,000, I think, is what they were.
Looks to me like a pretty good deal.
Yep.
We've had good service out of medics trucks. Those are trucks that are still in service.
Medics is the first one, then, right?
Yeah.
$158,000.
So that was the ones that had, we just currently purchased the other day.
All right. So you want to take these, and take a look at them?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we table these bids till the next regular meeting to give this item an opportunity to look over the specs and make sure which ones, if they're the same, or which one's going to suit us, or so forth and so on. So I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Let's take a minute. Thank y'all.
Okay, under new business, number five, Amanda Wilkins, CPA with Bates Carter. She's here with audit presentation for our fiscal year of 2020.
Yes. Okay, so my name is Amanda Wilkins, and I'm here to present the basic audit year Can you hear the echo that I can hear me well?
No, but you are cutting out a little bit.
Well, I'm doing my best over here. Thank you very much for letting me meet with you guys electronically in this new day and age. So I'm here to present a summary of what has gone into the financial statements for the county for 2020. I'm going to hit some of the highlights, and if there are any questions at the end, I'm glad to answer them. So to talk about what goes into the report that goes, that completes the financial statements for the county, there is an audit report where we have issued an unmodified or a clean opinion. This is the best opinion that you can get out of an audit, and what it means is that the financial statements are presented fairly with generally accepted accounting principles. Some other reports that are also included with the financial statements is a report on internal controls, that's specifically related to governmental entities, and the report on federal awards in accordance with uniform guidance. That is a relation to the money that's being received through federal funding, and it requires additional reporting and compliance work on the part of the county in the audit to be able to report back to the federal government how that money was spent appropriately. To look at what makes up the entirety of the financial statements, they are going to include all of the departments, funds, and elected official offices of the county. We are also including the component units, which include the Development Authority, which has the same year end as the county itself. And we are also relying on other audits that were performed by other firms for the Department of Public Health and the Water Authority. They are included in the financial statements, and they have a year end of June 30th, 2020. So to begin with the general fund, which is where most of the activity for the, for the county is going to be centered in, for 2020, revenues were more than expenditures by $2.4 million, which means that that was more money that was brought in than what was spent. In relation to how much revenue was received in the general fund compared to 2019, those revenues increased by $3.7 million, or just about 19%. Those increases are mainly related to tax increases from property taxes and sales increase. The sales tax increase makes up the majority of the increase in revenue, and that is an indicator of increased activity in the local community. Intergovernmental revenue also increased by $1.5 million, and that is a direct result of the CARES funding that was received by the county during the COVID pandemic. In addition, the transfers that were received by the general fund from other funds increased by $527,000, and that is mostly made up of the increase in the motel, hotel motel tax activity in 2020. The revenues, according to their relation to the approved budget, were, the revenues exceeded the budget by $3 million. And most of that is because motor vehicle taxes were more than expected. That's to be expected since usually efforts to budget forms of revenue such as motor vehicle taxes are more conservative in nature, and the state has changed the allocation percentage of how much money is being retained by local municipalities from this form of revenue. So that is increasing the amount of money that the county is able to keep from motor vehicle taxes. Lost taxes were also over budget by $1.5 million. Again, we're seeing an increase in 2020 of local spending, and this is one of the indicators that you can see here. The insurance premium tax also was over budget, and charges for services were under budget by about $100,000, and that is because there's really a decrease that we're seeing in recreation fee revenue, which is also to be expected in 2020, when there's not as many activities that were being held in person due to the pandemic. When you're looking at what was spent in the general fund, expenditures increased by $1.4 million compared to what had been spent in 2019. As I'd like to point out here, that is an increase of 7% as compared to the increase of revenue of 19%. So even though expenditures went up, the revenues increased by a larger portion. Most of these increases in expenditures are related to increased, increased costs in the health claims and increases in wages and benefits. And in addition to those increases, there was also a planned spending increase of capital outlay purchases made by the county of about $400,000. Overall, expenditures fell beneath the final approved budget by $942,000. Salaries and benefits in particular were under budget by $612,000, so that's about 6% less than had been intended to be spent. And public health and welfare expenditures were $168,000 less than budget. Again, in 2020, there was less activity than would be considered to be normal in the budgeting I wanted to be able to show what's the trend of revenue to expenditures for the general fund has been over the past five years. So as you can see, the blue line indicates what revenue has been brought in, and the orange line represents what money has been spent out of the general fund each year. So if the blue line is above the expenditures, that means that there's been growth in fund balance, and we can see that in 2020, mainly due to the amount of money that was brought in that has not yet been budgeted to be spent. The amount of fund balance that's considered to be unreserved, so it's available for normal operating costs, when you compare that to what the county averages as a normal annual expenditure amount, that gives us this percentage that I'm presenting here in this, in this slide. The Government Finance Officers Association recommends that this percentage be at least 25 or 35%. That would indicate that the county has on hand at year end enough to be able to fund about a quarter or a third of its year's costs. So that, the percentage being higher means that right now, at the end of 2020, in unreserved fund balance, the county had enough funds to be able to cash flow about seven months out of the year. So having this high percentage means that the commissioners have the ability to work with the fund balance that's available to be used for future projects and for future planned growth. I wanted to touch on some of the other major funds that are presented in the financial statements as independent funds. The Excise Watching Tax Fund is where the hotel motel tax is received and reported. In 2020, $3 million was brought in in revenue. Of that $3 million, $1.5 million was spent by sending those payments over to the county chamber, which is required by law, and the amount that was transferred to the general fund amounted to $1.4 million. I've included a trend line to be able to show what the amount of revenues that had been received over the last five years had done, and as you can see, there's a large increase in 2020. We're seeing that in 2020, since we had all of these social distancing requirements, a lot of that meant that people went to the mountains and were able to socially distance, and the county was able to see the results of this increase in the activity coming into the county. SLOSS collected $7.5 million in 2020. Of that amount, $4.3 million was spent for the approved projects that had been voted on in the referendum. Some of these projects include improvements to roads and bridges, work on the administration building, and then intergovernmental dispersments to cities. If you'd like to see more information about what the SLOSS projects were, and what their status is, they are reported in the financial statements on a separate schedule. To talk about the debt that the county is withholding as of the end of 2020, the long-term debt for governmental activities totaled $1.7 million. That makes up a note from direct for the ACCG installment of about $1.1 million, which will mature in 2021, this current year, and capital leases of about $565,000, which will mature over the next three years. And I wanted to put that into a little bit of perspective. So the blue line that you see at the bottom is the last few years of how much debt was being held by Panon County. And the orange line above it is the average debt from comparably sized counties in Georgia based on population size. So as you can see, the amount of governmental activity debt that the county has been managing is regularly much lower than its peers. So the county is being able to cash flow a lot of its intended growth projects. To touch on the net pension liability, at the end of 2020, the total net pension liability was $3.4 million. We have recently had changes in the standards for how this net pension liability is being reported in the financial statements, and there is an offsetting account for deferred outflows, which tracks some of the changes in the market value of the investments that are being held that the county has been paying into that will offset some of these future expenses that are going to be related to the liability. So that's one of the reasons why the liability can have these large changes from year to year based on what that activity in the market is really doing. So I've added a trend line to show that the liability is increasing, but overall, it's maintaining a rather, a rather consistent upward trend. It's not increasing as, as largely as it might indicate from one year to the next. And finally, I wanted to discuss a recording change that's also coming into this current year in 2020's financial statements. The fiduciary activities are reported in a way where we are now showing the total amount that came in, into a fiduciary activity, and then what was expended by that fiduciary activity in the current year. So we had to adjust the beginning balances for a change in accounting principle based on this new standard that was set, and this is a new report that's been added into the county financial statements. As you can see, most of the fiduciary activity is related to the elected official offices, but this, this change in reporting gives some, some better concept to be able to see how much is, how much activity is coming in and out of these offices every year. So that was the high points of the 2020 financial statements. Are there any questions that I can answer for you?
Amanda, I don't think there are any questions at this time.
Well, thank you very much. I've been.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, everything was upside down. Pannon County was on the right track. So we're definitely thankful for that. That's fantastic, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Any further discussion on that?
No, sorry.
No.
All right, moving on to number six. We have a variance request from Keith Sumner. Build a house 12 feet from the edge and 18 feet from the center line on Enchanted Forest Circle. Commissioner Patterson, anything you want to?
We're looking at it. We're looking at it. Down the high?
No, it'd be the next one.
That one?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I see Keith's back there. I didn't really get to go to this one. It's pretty steep way up there, and the road's fairly narrow. I went part of the silverway up there, and I didn't know if I'd make it back to meeting time tonight. Keith, you want to tell us a little bit about this? You can come up here if you'd like to.
Well, I can do that, or I can stand right here, either one you want me to do.
Which I will use your most comfortable.
Okay.
Let's pick up.
This particular lot is very steep.
Yeah.
And Channing Ridge Circle, there are several houses they have already built very closely to the road. I think I'm probably 10 foot further back than my neighbors. It's just so steep. I just need to bring the house a little closer to the road. Try to create a little bit better parking area and actually make the building side a little easier for myself. So let's cut to the chase, and that's it. I don't think I'm encroaching quite to the degree as my neighbor on each side. I understand that we need to consider privacy to our neighbors, and I feel like asking for what I ask for. It's well within around the groups of what the community has already offered to us.
Like I said.
No questions. Go ahead.
I was gonna say, I went up there, and yeah, I know it started bleeding when I was up there.
It is steep. It really is.
I was kind of worried if I needed a fire shooter or not.
Well, it is.
No.
And we want to build a pretty nice house there. And obviously, the further I push the house off the road, the smaller the house is probably going to be, and probably the less taxes that the county is going to be. I hate to bring that up. We might not be able to get as big a tax basis off it. Whatever that's worth.
I think everybody knows Keith Sumner don't build in small houses.
Well, no, no, no. We want to build a really, really good house. So I appreciate you guys considering this, and I don't think I would embarrass you, and I don't think I'll hurt your tax bases.
Keith, so how far are you from me? Each other's house? I mean, what's the?
Oh.
You want to say?
It's probably... Okay, it's the center of my house. We're probably... Gosh, I'm probably 150 to 200 feet both sides with each house. I don't think it's... I just, of course, I'm in it for me, but I just don't see how this is going to affect our neighbors to each side. One neighbor, one neighbor, their driveway runs off down the bottom of the hill. The other neighbor, they've already... The corner of their porch folks is like two feet of road. I'm asking for sure. I guess I'm crying the blues here.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here opposing me?
Okay, thank you. It's not a campaign.
Okay.
It is private.
I'm Robert Haynes. I'm the president of the association for the Channing Forests. I've been approached by all of our members about this variance. We don't mind the variance too much, but the problem that we're having, there's only one other house in that association that is close to the road. That's what Keith had mentioned about the post being like two foot away. Is the park. That house that he's mentioned with the post is a rental. It became a rental, and it's called Chestnut Lodge. There's five, six cars there. They block the road. Emergency vehicles can't get through there. I've had to go there many a times and beat on their door and say, "You need to get the car out of the road. People can't get through." We've had people park their car there and leave, and they have to go, somebody has to go get them, come bring them back, and move the vehicles. They don't mind that he wants to move the house closer, build it closer to the road. As long as there is plenty of parking. We don't know what's going to happen to this house after he builds it. You know, somebody buys it, they turn it into a rental, and we have the same issue that we're having now. I think that house is the only one in Channing Circle, or Enchanted Forest community, that had a variance done to it to get closer to the road. I understand that it is steep there. The house he's talking to on the right side of it, we used to own it. About a week ago, we sold it. Our driveway went down. It went down, and the house was lowered and set back. It's not as steep as what he's talking about. I think he's crazy to build there anyway, because I'm up there. I take care of the roads up there. And that's all the community is looking for, is not to have vehicles where they're blocking the roadways and making it difficult for the people in the community.
So in other words, his building is not the problem. It's the one that's got the... One that's closest to the road.
Yeah, we just don't want to duplicate that problem.
And Keith, I don't think it's going to be a problem, is it?
Can I reply?
Yeah.
He is exactly right, 100%. And the way they built that house, the way you're going to pull into that house... I'll try to do a good job of explaining this. Here's the house and the post and the road here. The way they built the road, I mean, they don't have a way to get in there. So everything you said is 100% correct. That was the other reason why I wanted to back my house off 18 feet. Because probably, as the paper is my foundation, my plans were to build another wing wall and to create parking all across the front of that. The price range house that I'm going to build, I can't get away with what my neighbor did. I mean, I can't do that. I agree with you. I can see where you could and you should have a concern with that. Hopefully, when I get through with this, I mean, I would hope to park six to eight cars in front of mine, because my goal is to build a house and push it back off 18 feet instead of two feet, and put a wing wall and fill all that in with dirt. Because I own the property all the way from the bottom, so I'll be able to bring all that material around and backfill. But the further off the road I get, the more backfill that I have to do. So if I can get it closer to the road, I can take care of my problem and take care of your problem too. Because I agree with you 100%, because if an ambulance comes into the house you're talking about, they got to park in the road. I mean, there's no way. You can't even park... I mean, if there's two cars in that parking lot, an ambulance has to park in the road. That's not my goal here. And like I say, I built several houses here, and hopefully, the board has an idea of my reputation, and I will not let you guys down either. I mean, I fully intend on this being a nice home for your community, and I understand the needs of the folks that will buy it. And you're right. I wish I could argue with you, because what you're saying is absolutely correct. That's not my vision of this. So I probably have not done a good job of communicating that in my variance request. But and I am sorry. I should have probably talked to you guys to let you know. But your concerns are valid, and that's not my vision for what I'm requesting.
So this house that's built close to the road, who owns this house?
Diane, yeah. It's Diana or something like that. I have to look it up in the paper.
So she has it on the rental cabin rental program?
Yeah.
Have they contacted her or talked to her about this issue?
Oh, many of them.
Yeah, look, you can't fix that issue. It's just impossible now that, you know, that that is done. But, you know, I mean, he's talking about a minute farther away from the road than just as far as I want it is. As long as there's emergency vehicles getting through. We have some emergency vehicles that live up there full time.
Yeah.
I'm one of them, you know, and we just got to be able to get through.
But his project is not going to be like that.
That's what we were concerned about. We don't know that.
I don't think, if Keith told you that, I don't think you got to worry about it.
Yeah. No, yes, sir.
Let me ask you. You said a couple of times, 18 feet. Now, I've got on my sheet that it's going to be 12 feet from the edge of the road.
My goal, let me say this.
18 from the center line.
When we start working off that hill, 12, 18, my goal is to push that house back as absolute far as we can, because they're right. They're 100% right. We need to get that house back as far as we can. And to be honest with you, the one gal that worked for me, she had written this down. So it's 12 feet from the edge of the road, it's 18 feet from the center line.
Yeah, right.
So where we actually dig those particular footings, you know what, it's a real... I mean, we got to have a little bit of leeway there, because it may be one foot one way or one foot the other. But to my neighbor's point, they are correct. We need to try to consider getting as much parking in there as we can. Where I set this house is probably less relevant as to how I build the house, and how I build the wing walls, and how much parking I give outside the boundaries. Because we all realize that when I set the foundation on a steep lot, the parking is created because of the foundation. So I have to recreate the amount of parking based on the wing walls that's connected to the foundation. So I...
You're going to build it in the center of the lot, or you're going to?
Going to build it in the center of the lot, and I am going to do the wing walls to try to fill it in and to create parking. However, if I push the house back to, I think it's 35 foot set back from the edge of the road to the front, into the front foundation. Is that correct?
Supposedly.
I think so. So the further I push it off, the more material I got to steal from the bottom of the water to fill in, which is fine. And if that's what the board tells me to do, that's what I'm going to do. But it would just make a lot more sense to bring it a little closer to the road, because I don't need the extra space to get the parking that you guys think we need. And I don't disagree with you. I mean, you are correct. And not only for the ambulances and everybody else, it's the sellability of the house. I mean, the price range houses I build, you can't sell that kind of house and say, "Okay, you parked your car there." That doesn't make sense to me. So anyway, like I say, I'm just a business person. I'm all made for myself. But in a way, you know, I get what the community needs, and we need to... I need to think about that. And I do appreciate you guys bringing it up, and I agree with you. I agree with you 100%. And if we can work this out, I definitely will do the best I can as to push the house as far off the road and to create as many wing walls as in the house and parking land, because we do need that. And my customer base will ask for that.
So it's parking the land, it's parking so it's on the community as well.
Well, absolutely. Don't disagree with me.
Yeah, we only got one road that goes up there, one road back out. So with that being said, you know, if Mr. Sumner agrees that he can provide parking for...
Yeah, the community does.
Next, my partner, we're going to go. We just don't want kind of the same little scenario as the neighbor up there. We're going to get two cars. And I think Mr. Sumner did agree with that.
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
I could really screw up and do better than the neighbors. I could really do a bad job and still be much better than them.
I wouldn't understand.
Okay, that's it. My last comment.
All right.
All right. Then say I'll ask for a motion that we approve the variance request from Keith Sumner to build a house 12 feet from the edge and 18 feet from the center line of the Channing Circle. I'll ask for that motion. I'll ask for it?
Or make a motion.
I'll make the second. All in favor? Thank you all for coming. Appreciate that. As well. Number seven, there's a variance request from Mountain High Investments. LLC to build a garage 7 feet from the edge of Misty Mountain Trail and 13 feet from the center line. So again, went and took a look at this one and just, I mean, that's the only place to put, that I could see on this property to be able to put this, this garage. And Mr. Sumner, just to kind of give me a... I know as you're going down the driveway, there's a little hook that goes around. Is that a through driveway as well? Or does that actually stop at the other property line next door? I mean, on here, it kind of shows like a little...
Yeah, if you're looking at the way.
Almost like a curved route.
Are you talking about the driveway on the...
Sure. Coming down the driveway, and the house sits over here, and the garage is where you want to build it right here, right? So there's a little... It shows like here, there's a little road that kind of goes in front of that, where that garage is going to be, like a driveway or something.
Okay, there's just a driveway between the house and the garage.
Okay, all right.
So that's driveway right there on that property?
Yeah, the garage is on the property. You'll actually pull down in the driveway and pull into the garage.
Okay.
The garage is actually sitting... Now, it's funny we're talking about the Enchanted Forest. This one's closer to the road than the Enchanted Forest.
Right.
Neighbor there, I mean, it's literally in the road. Their garage is in the road. I have pulled this garage off the road. But you'll access the garage from the driveway. So you go down like you're going into the house and drive into the garage.
So it's not going to be coming off Misty Mountain Trail?
No, it will not. So there'll be plenty of parking down in the bottom down there.
Is there anyone here who poses this variance request?
Now, I went out and saw this one. It does have a big drop off. I was looking at the diagram here, and the garage is going to be up near the top, right?
Well.
Away from the house. Is that right?
The garage actually will be the same level as the front door, so I'll drive down and back into the garage.
Okay.
So as you're driving on Misty Mountain Trail,
Yeah.
you'll probably be driving beside of the roof. So it'll be within, I don't remember what we put there, I don't have my glasses on, 7 feet from the road. So I will backfill everything against my board wall, so we will secure the road itself. Right now, that's a pretty steep drop off. That was a tear down. We bought the lot, and they had already tore everything down. So they kind of, they cut the house out, and then they put dirt back in there, and it kind of helped secure the road. I don't know. It's just filled already in there. So when I put the retaining wall in there, we're going to, at that point, help secure Misty Mountain Trail, because at one point, it probably had been undermined a little bit.
The road's stiff, yeah.
The garage itself will help secure the Misty Mountain Trail road. But it shouldn't do anything but widen the road if you want to know the real truth about it, because when you make the turn there, you notice that that road was pretty narrow. So I'm going to backfill, and I'll fill the road back in against my retaining wall. So you should widen the road. It helps secure the road as well.
Anything else you'd love to say about it?
All right. I'll ask for a motion that we approve the variance request from Mountain High Investments LLC to build a garage 7 feet from the edge of Misty Mountain Trail and 13 foot from the center line. I'll ask for that motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you. And next, number eight, we have Damon Hughes with USDA APHIS Wildlife Services. Mr. Hughes, if you'd like to come up and explain to us. Um, Mr. Hughes, if you'd like to come up and explain to us what's going on there.
And I've got a presentation, it's, uh, how much time we got? I know everybody wants to get home to their families and some people to suffer and.
Do you have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? All right, I'll talk fast. And I'll be glad to stick around afterward in here or downstairs or outside and talk to anybody that's got any questions and answer anything to the best of my abilities. Appreciate the opportunity to come up. Zach called me the other day and, and asked me if I'd come talk and I'm always glad to get out and talk about projects that we're working on and so.
What does APHIS stand for?
Animal Plant Health Inspection Service. Uh, we have sister agency, um, PPQ, Plant Protection Quarantine. You might see them at, at the, uh, some of the international gates and cargo stuffs coming in, checking that. Uh, veterinary services, another sister agency within, with, under that. So we're actually a fairly small division within US Department of Agriculture. When I started in two thousand and one here in Georgia, we're, we're broken up by, by states. And I was number five hired in the state. Now we probably have, what, thirty or so being, would you think? So we've grown a lot. A lot of that's due to some, some federal funding that's come through, feral swine in, in particular. Uh, we, we, we've got a number of people doing feral swine work throughout the state. Did it throw you a curve ball?
Yeah, curve ball.
And if we, I, I can talk about it if we can't get it up, that's fine. Okay, um, as a mention, my name is Damon Hughes. I'm a wildlife biologist with US Department of Agriculture Wildlife Services. And what I was asked to talk about tonight was our, um, oral rabies vaccine bait drop. We've been doing this in Georgia since two thousand and three, two thousand and four. But up until this year, it was only in five counties in the northwest corner. And the reason being, it's just the way our line, this, this is actually a, a national program. Um, this particular project starts up in Maine, comes down the whole east coast. Our goal initially was to stop the western spread of the raccoon variant of rabies. That's, that's the variant that we're, we're concerned with here in the eastern US. There are some other strains, but the, the raccoon variant is, is, it gets back to economics as we mentioned earlier, you know? It, it's the most costly strain, probably, probably a part due to where it's located. We're on the east coast, we're twice as populated as the west coast and, and obviously more populated than the center part of the country. So you have animals interacting with people, raccoons, obviously the reservoir for this. Any mammal, as far as we know, any mammal can get any strain of rabies. Um, but due to the interaction with, with domestics and humans here on the e- here on, I say the east coast, the eastern, um, portion of the US, uh, the economic impact is just tremendous. We, we don't, we're a first world country, we don't think too much about rabies. But, um, I was looking at some data a couple of days ago and there's roughly thirty to fifty thousand post-exposure prophylaxis given every year. So if you've been exposed or is potentially you've been exposed, then, you know, all this goes through the health department, but you, you basically gotta go get a, a post-exposure shot. Once the onset of symptoms of rabies occurs, it's too late. It's, it's, for all intents and purposes, a hundred percent, a hundred percent lethal. So, and if you look on the average of, of three thousand dollars, you're talking between ninety million and, and a hundred and eighty million just in post-exposure. Uh, you talk about diagnostics and everything else, you're looking at two hundred and forty-five to over five hundred million, uh, in cost to, uh, to the e- just eastern US alone. The project started in ninety-seven up in some of the northern tier states. They were actually working with Canada. Um, Canada was, was doing this before we were and they kept having some, some jumps over the line. So we were working with them to try to decrease that, uh, to help them keep this strain out of, out of Canada. Uh, with some of our leadership, they decided to slowly work it down the, um, the east coast. And what it is, they, they know where the, the line is for the, um, the raccoon strain. So they got on the western edge of that and basically started dropping baits and, and trying to, to keep it from spreading further west. If, if it continued to spread like it was in, in twenty years, well, it's been twenty years from, from then, you know, you would have looked at, I think it was a fifty-five or, yeah, it was like a fifty-five million dollar impact per year as you moved west because you got a lot more livestock and stuff like that that, that you could, that would, um, kind of be in the wake of it as, where, not to mention, you know, the, the more area you cover, the more people is there. So the idea was to stop that western movement, which was twenty-five to thirty miles west per year. We've basically done that. We're, we're at the point where we were before. Um, there's, there's been, for all intents and purposes, there's been no western movement. There's been some, there's been some spotty stuff on the west edge of the, the line that we're dropping. But we go in as a contingency plan, we do some trapping, we, we test those animals and then we go in and bait those areas heavily and we continue that for two years until there's, there's been no positives in that area for two years. And at the same time, we maintain the, the, the more eastern portion of that line. This year, the baits have come available because some of those contingencies have gone away and they decided to include more down into Georgia, up into North Carolina. So that's, that's where Fanning County comes in. Y'all are one of the counties that are included in that. And understand when I say a county's included, that don't necessarily mean that the whole county, um, it, it's, it's, I'm a visual person, so it's easier for me to show it. But portions of counties are, are, I think the Fanning, it's most, it's just about the whole county. So there, there's, there, there's always questions about this when it started. Like I say, we've been doing it since oh-four in, in Dade, Walker, Catoosa, Wickville, Chautauqua and a little bit of Murray, but that was just a sliver of the corner. We had one positive in Walker County this year. I think that was the first positive we've had in maybe six or seven years. Um, there's been none in Dade in a number of years, none in Catoosa for several years. So it's, it's definitely making an impact. I spoke with the environmental health coordinator in, in, uh, Chautauqua County today and she's had some positives, but she told me, she said, they're, they're either right on the line or they're below the line where y'all dropped. So they've had, they've really had none in Chautauqua County that's up in the area that we've been dropping. So, so it is working. Obviously, we don't have that westward movement like we did before. This particular bait that we're using, we call it a coated sachet. It's a, it's a raboral, rabies oral, raboral, V R G. I'm not even gonna start trying to explain what the V R G is because that's, there's people out there a lot smarter than me that knows all this stuff. But this, it was developed by Maryelle, which used to be out of Athens, I guess are still out of Athens, but they've been bought by an international company. But they've tested it over, over sixty animals, sixty different species of animals, um, including domestics and other wildlife. It's safe in those animals. Doesn't necessarily mean that it inoculates those animals. Again, we're, we're trying to deal with the, the raccoon strain. It, um, particularly raccoons and, and skunks in this area. It's potentially, it could inoculate some other species if they get enough of the bait. But those are the two main carriers that, that we have with, with raccoons obviously being the most common. And so that, that's what it is. Your dog picks it up. They make, they, it's, it's the, there's a, a fishmeal polymer on the outside, which is the attractant that gets the raccoons to eat the bait. That's, that's a real rich bait. If a dog picks up four or five of them, it's just like they eat anything else that's rich. They may get a stomach ache, they may throw up. I mean, I, I've got dogs outside, they, they do that all the time because of whatever they may eat. But it's, it's not gonna harm them. Um, it's not gonna harm cats, it's not gonna harm any of the wildlife. Um, I live over in Walker County. I say we've been doing it over there for seventeen years. I can guarantee you there's plenty of wildlife to go around. Um, so there, there's always that concern though. Humans, there's been very few cases we drop, I don't know, eight or nine million baits, or maybe it's more than that, every year. And there's been very few human exposures. Most of them, they're, if they are exposed, there's, there's no problem. You know, we recommend if somebody sees a bait, ideally leave it alone if it's in your yard, you know? If you, if you must pick it up, get a tissue or something, pick it up, toss it off in the woods where maybe a raccoon will find it. That's very worse than throwing it in the trash. Um, yeah.
How do you determine where you put the bait?
Right.
And where you place the bait?
Right, these baits are dropped aerially. Um, we used to do some hand mating in suburban urban areas. We, we still do some of that. They, they're continuing to do studies on that. It's, it's, if you look on, if you look on a map, it's just not productive because we're doing that. We're, we're basically doing what we got trouble for, for kids. We're throwing stuff out vehicle windows, you know? Um, but, and it's, it's a lot of fun till the, till a couple of days afterwards and your shoulder and your elbow hurts and, and, uh, your, your work truck smells like fish. But so, but what we do, we, this is all GIS and we've got, it's, it's all, the systems are on the planes. It's called AGNAV and basically these lines are set up by our program directors. They're, um, I think it's eighteen hundred and forty feet grid lines. And so it's dropped on those grid lines. Very few areas we don't bait, being wilderness areas, we're not allowed to bait. Um, if, if there's large nuclear plants, we're not, obviously we, we go around those. Um, but the majority of it we bait. It's, it's, it's really neat how we do it because we, we lease those, these planes from a company, lease the plane, planes and the pilots. And, um, we've, we have a wildlife service personnel up front, we call them the navigator. And then we have the crew, or one person in the back that's putting the baits on the conveyor belt, maintaining the baits. And when we fly over urban areas, houses, rivers, stuff like that where we don't drop baits, we cut the machine off and we've got a system there where we know when to cut it off and when to cut it on. But the whole area is baited on these grid lines. In standard grids, we drop seventy-five per square mile. In double density where we may have had some positives, we don't, we, we drop a hundred and fifty per square mile. So it's just same number per line, it's just we double the line that goes down to eight hundred and something square or feet apart. So as I mentioned, while we have the line where it's at and, and, and I've got some of these, I, I gave the commissioner some, some pamphlets and some information, that black line there. If you can see, this, this, of course, eastern US and this black line right here, that's where we're actually dropping baits. And we're starting to move eastward. Um, obviously, well, here it would be kind of south, but it's, it's to, they considered east of the line. And like I say, as, as they finish up areas and they, they have more baits available, the, the biggest cost of our program is the baits. I think somebody told me at the bait drop this year, the biggest cost is the baits. The second largest cost is fuel for the airplanes and helicopters that we use. And, uh, I think we come in a, a low third as far as, um, salaries paid. So we're not the highest paid people in the world because there's a lot of people involved in this bait drop. It's, um, it's a three or four month process. Like I say, they start up in Maine and they work down that, that line. Um, I usually jump in about Dalton and work in Dalton and Gunnersville, but.
So you drop them in this time of year?
We finished up in October. We finished up, we typically, we typically start the first of October with our rotary wing. That's out of Chattanooga. Um, and we do, uh, Chattanooga and that kind of goes down into the Dalton area. Um, Lafayette. That's, that's about it in Georgia.
This has already been done in Fanning County?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Tell us after the fact.
Well, I, I, I at least sent you, I sent, there was an email sent out to y'all. I don't know if y'all got it or not.
Okay.
Uh, regarding that. And that's, that's what I, the first year we send stuff out, it's hard to know. Every, I, I've learned every county's different and, and who to get the information true. I try to get it to local law enforcement if possible, um, a- and I know we all get tons of emails. I used to send them out via mail, but I've learned too that a lot of that goes, they don't recognize that it goes into circular files and, and I, I get it. We all get a lot of mail too, so.
I think the, the main concern for us is just to make sure like if, if somebody's seen that bait out somewhere that it is basically, it's not harmful to our dogs, cats.
Right, that's it.
And even, and humans. I, I think that's the biggest thing, but I don't, I don't know about you Jim, and I did get a couple of calls about, hey, what is this? And, uh, you know, I think that's kind of my.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Just, just maybe try to put some folks to ease.
Sure. Like I say, it's been, it's been testing over sixty animals before we ever used it the first time. And that was in ninety-seven. Yes, sir.
Do you have one, what does it look like?
I have some pictures, but there, there may be. It, it looks like a NARA ketchup packet. And it's got, uh, it's got like a paraffin wax on it. It's, it's coated with, uh, yeah, you got some. And I've got some more of these if anybody's interested. Um, if the paraffin wax comes off, there's actually a telephone number. I think it's Maryelle's telephone number. The health departments are all familiar with this. They get, they're, they're kind of our, our go-to, uh, if, if they get a call, that's where the call goes to, so.
Okay.
But, um, but yeah, they, this was, this was new to me. I found out at our annual meeting this year that we were gonna do this, uh, in, in these counties, so.
So can we expect this like?
Should be every year from, from here on.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And if there's anybody here, it's any organizations or anybody that's interested in me coming and giving a talk, be glad to, love to, love to get in, in, in front of the public like this and give presentations. Um, so by all means, um, I've got cards with me if you want my contact information, if you've got, ever, got any questions about it. You know, that's, that's what I do. Yes, sir.
Max, I'd like to know what you would be monitoring after the drop, if you'd be monitoring the animals, is that what?
Thank you, Zach. Uh, I mean, that's what our contact is, Zach, for initially was, after we, after we bait, we go in four to six weeks afterwards into the areas we bait and we, our target is a hundred and twenty raccoons. We trap a hundred and twenty raccoons and we take those animals, we methatize them, we draw blood. When the animals will wake up, we carry them back to the capture site. We will have an ear tag in them that, that has our contact information. If somebody's hunting or something and they shoot it, they can give us a call. We'll, you know, we'll explain to them what that is. Um, and what this does, we send this, we, we take the blood, we take the serum off the blood, we send it to a lab and they test it for a tyder. That tyder tells us whether or not they, they got in the bait and they have a, a tyder and it's rabies, much like the tyder test for COVID or something like that. So what that does, that gives us an idea of the percentage of animals that actually took the bait. And, and that can give us a lot of information in the future if we, if we need to, um, increase baits or if we're having, so it just gives us a, a metric to go by every year. And, and it, it fluctuates some. You know, we shoot for thirty percent or better. Uh, so, so yeah, so we'll be, um, we'll be over this direction in, um, the, well, the week after Thanksgiving, uh, trapping and, and talk to Zach about the ride away. We've got, um, permission from Georgia DOT to do it. Well, like I say, this is the way we've been doing it in counties over northwest Georgia. Uh, we appreciate y'all allowing us to do that, giving us permission to trap on the ride away. It's a lot easier than trying to go to individuals and, and get a few acres here and a few acres there. And, uh, so, so we really appreciate that.
We appreciate you coming up, dating us and.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know it was something new for us and we, we did get a few calls, like I said, wondering what it was and, um, hopefully this will clarify for.
Sure.
For some folks around us, so we appreciate your time and, and effort in doing this.
If y'all didn't get my email, I apologize. I, um, I tried to get every county.
It was Zach's fault.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
But thank y'all for, for having me.
We appreciate it. All right, next on the agenda will be our recreation director, Eddie O'Neil, discussing up the field drainage on the recreation field. He's scratching, so that's kind of a, that's a worry for him.
A few months back, you guys approved, uh, engineering drawings to renovate fields number six and seven. So those drawings are completed and, uh, we would like to just move forward and go into a, uh, take it to the, to the bid process to renovate and fix the drainage. It, it'll, it'll be basically a complete renovation of those fields. So it's ready for bid, the drawings and I have all the hard copies on that stuff.
Now, there's two, were they, were they just soccer field and the football field and that?
No, it's field six and seven, it's baseball fields.
Two baseball fields.
That's correct, yeah. That's correct, yeah.
Everything at the other fields are okay?
For now, yeah, we're just kind of doing what needs it as much as first. We finished field five in twenty twenty, it was, it's, it's received the most damage. So now we're just working our way around. Yeah, as, as we let SPOS money build up, this will be a SPOS project. So as we let SPOS build up, we will work through that. I think there's just under a half million in SPOS, right at a half million dollars. We've saved back up in SPOS again, so it should be pretty close to that.
How's the playground with the gun?
Waiting on it.
Oh, you're still waiting?
Still waiting, yeah. I think you picked it up this week, I wish you did.
Looking at bids.
I don't know if this is something we need to make a motion to put out for bid, but. I'll make a motion that we release this for bids. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right, thank you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Number ten, it's board approval of entering into a contract with GMASS for the Tax Assessor's office. Contract with duplicating products from printer contract for the Tax Assessor's office.
Okay, we've discussed this a couple of times now. It's in regards to continuing our current contract with GMASS. We're actually expanding it a little bit and renewing our current printer contract with duplicating products. The GMASS requests that the Board of Assessors is asking that the Board of Commissioners is anywhere from a sixty to a sixty-six thousand dollar project. It's going to be a complete reevaluation for commercial and industrial and rural property. Is all this contract is to have these particular parcels reevaluated before assessment notices go out for twenty twenty-two. And then. Do you want me to just discuss GMASS first and then go to the printer?
Yes, please.
Okay, like I discussed with all of you guys at the budget meeting, it's basically sixty to sixty-six thousand depending on the sales. If we don't need the rural land re-bought, we will not do it. That's going to take six thousand off of it. If we do have to do the rural land, it'll add six thousand to it.
What will make you decide that?
Sales. If the sales are out of line, then something will have to be done for the rural. With as much transaction as we've had.
How fast will you know about it?
Probably the first month of twenty twenty-two.
And also just, just for, for our knowledge, we have to do this every, how many years?
Well, we have to review every parcel every three years. The commercial and industrial parcels are more specialized type of properties that you want a professional in that particular field looking at those items. And when I say that, not to say I'm not a professional, it's just that GMASS for sixty thousand dollars can reevaluate these in our county for twenty twenty-two. And then internally, we try to maintain those and, and stay at market value. We've seen a lot of growth in Fannin County over the last two years. And it makes it hard trying to stay internally and do this type of reevaluation because you don't have four Walmart sales in Fannin County. You don't have six, you know, dealerships in Fannin County. You don't have seven nursing homes to sell to analyze the market to be able to build a good defendable value. And so what we do in cases like this, many counties will reach out to a company like GMASS and, and have their market analyzed and take a look and see where we're out of line. We know we're out of line on commercial and it's time to, to get that taken care of and, and fit that in the process for the twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-two assessment notices.
Charles, how many areas does that, the commercial and what percentage is it going to be?
So currently we have about eight hundred and seventy-nine commercial and industrial parcels. Those, it would affect that eight seventy-nine parcel count. We have twelve thousand three hundred and eighty-one rural parcels. That's all the parcels that are not river, lake, subdivision. It's the pieces of the county that, it's the dirt that holds the county together minus subdivisions, lakefront properties, water parcels, different entities of that line. We will be building all of those. So we have twenty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five parcels total in Fannin County. And GMASS will be looking at the eight hundred and seventy-nine and the twelve thousand three eighty-one if they have to. If they don't have to, that will happen until the next year. And so we'll be doing all the other parcels inside in office as we do every year.
Some more around that, about thirty percent.
And having the assistance of having GMASS is, is a really good thing for us in the sense of defendability and also taking some of our staff members that are newer to this and, and not been working with us for two years or so. It allows them to really learn and to take on that knowledge from these professionals. And allows us to push them to learn and to grow faster as well. They'll represent their cases Johnny, like if we have BOE cases that appeal, or taxpayers that appeal to Superior Court or to BOE. This firm will actually represent for five days. And after that five days, the internal appraisal staff will start representing.
The internal, isn't that you?
Myself and about six other girls.
And we get fixed in five days?
I don't know. So we've done this in the past and they represented two days and then myself and two other girls represented the rest of the time. And that works out real well.
So this, we're, you're needing to do this because it will help you get called up, or is it?
It's gonna, it's gonna help complete the entire countywide reevaluation. It'll bring the ratio study in line tighter, bring property values to market. And of course, it's, this investment is into, if we find that our values are too low, the revenue will go up.
Is this something that has to be repeated service or is this?
And by law, we're supposed to review every parcel every three years.
Every three years. So this is the third year, I assume, but.
A little more than that.
Okay. I'm sure I got something, I just can't think of it.
No, I talked with Dawn about this and she said, you know, we'll be defenseable. These are professionals and more than anything, they have the tools. That's all they do, they specialize in these type of areas. What, where are we going to get the income for this, sixty thousand? Where's it going to come from?
I ain't paid. I'm sure that will be in there.
That's a big question.
That would be in their twenty, twenty-two budget.
It is, it is a part of our twenty twenty-two budget request, yeah. And the reason I'm kind of having to jump ahead and ask to enter into a contract is we are needing to get on the calendar. We are wanting to have this, we've been talking with them for a while now. We are requesting to, to enter into this contract, which will allow, once that the, the Board of Assessors have approved it, the Board of Commissioners approval would be made. And then we can get on the calendar to have this work all done before the notices go out in twenty twenty-two.
It's important that we get caught up and get this done.
Yes.
Our staff is still kind of a little bit young and we want the accuracy, so it can be defendable.
Yes.
Plus they are there with the board of equalizations when we're going to get. You said you probably feel like we'll get a lot of, what's the word I'm trying to get? People question?
Yes.
Appeals, we have, we have said all appeals.
You'll get some pushback when you, you know, with the work that I'm doing internal plus what we're asking GMASS to assist with. You know, you're, you're going to be touching twenty-eight thousand parcels.
A lot. A lot of work.
So we're basically, so you're basically. Yeah, so you're basically asking us to go ahead and approve this, it's in your budget coming up, you want to get on the list.
Yeah, because by law, the Board of Assessors have to have the Board of Commissioners consent to enter into a contract like this. We're already in one contract, we're just extending into the twenty twenty-two year. And I will be working hand in hand with them. I'll be helping qualify, disqualify sales. I know the one time me and you talked, if there's some kind of outlandish stuff come through, I have the power of saying that's not qualified. Push that aside. And, and the Board of Assessors have full control of, of that ratio. When it comes back in, we all work together.
Keep us updated?
Yeah. And then the part about the printer is just that we have November the first, November the first was the deadline for our current contract with the printer that we have. And we're just asking to extend it because we do sign a contract. I've asked Sherry to put it on the agenda so that we can stay within our limits. I think we've been with the same company for over five years with this, with this contract. It's just now time to come out.
No money, just a contract?
It is a hundred and fifty-eight dollars a month lease and our last one was a hundred and forty-six.
One hundred dollars more?
Yeah.
This, the length of this contract is for?
Sixty months.
Sixty?
Yes.
And it's just time to review it again, basically. Five years for a hundred and forty-six and then went up to a hundred and fifty-eight.
Yes.
All right, discussion on that. All right, so we'll revert back to the GMASS contract. So I'll ask for a motion that we enter into a contract with GMASS to assist the Tax Assessors and rephrase it. I'll ask for that motion.
Make a motion.
Ask for a second.
Second.
All in favor? And as for the contract with duplicating products, DPI, I think it's called around. I'll make a motion that we enter into a contract with DPI for the printer contract for the Tax Assessor's office and I'll ask for a second.
I'll say.
All in favor? All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, number eleven, now it's discussion for our next meeting in November. Our next regular meeting, if I'm not mistaken, will be on the twenty-third, would be on the twenty-third. Obviously, we know that's the week of Thanksgiving. The, the discussion would be, I'm not sure how we done it in years past.
Can't remember.
But whether to, to move the meeting to the third or to cancel the November meeting, the second November meeting.
Tuesday, the thirtieth?
Yes, it is.
Tuesday, November thirtieth.
Got no problem? I've checked my secretary and my schedule.
I would say with, with everything that we got going on, that we just actually extend it up to the thirtieth. That would be a recommendation, so that's up for discussion if you guys want to.
I think I'm okay with it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we move the meeting from the twenty-third of November to the thirtieth of November. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
You're afraid the boss would say something?
You gotta keep her in line.
Number twelve is our, as we were talking about our discussion with Casell, we've been working on our, Patrick I should say, I always say we've been in much trouble. But Patrick and David Jackson have been working with Casell on a couple of things that will, they've been doing this for like six, seven months and it just kind of dropped on us at the last minute, so.
Pretty much today.
Yeah.
And we need to get, kind of move it on so we can implement it by the first of the year. This is the portion of our, the module in our accounting software that will allow us to accept online payments from people paying their.
Hotel motel?
Hotel motel. So that, this will allow us to import that directly into our accounting software. And this needs to be, so we can move forward and get it implemented by the first of the year.
So this is, now, help me here now. It's just like, what are you saying?
People actually pay their hotel motel tax online and what will happen, that will actually dump into the account, into.
The accounting software.
Yes.
The accounting software already, yes.
So we'll get it quicker?
Well.
It'll be.
More efficient.
More efficient for us and also be more beneficial for the, for the people who pay the, the tanks. Instead of coming in and.
A lot of people mail those and when you get on there, like stacks.
Yeah.
So, and there's a lot of the people that mail that, that live off from here, so that will be very convenient for them, so.
Actually, it's also been done. Use that for the permits for.
The alarms?
Alarms and rental rentals. So that will actually offset the cost of the software, the permits bill.
How much is it?
The cost of this module is ninety-four hundred dollars.
Seventy-four?
Ninety-four.
And just so y'all know, back in July when we were working on this, we, we actually calculated those numbers into next year's budget. So out of the Commissioner's office, so. And we're able to keep that budget pretty, pretty tight too, so. This will also open up other avenues for us in the future. Is that correct?
Yes, this will allow us to take any kind of online payment and for anything.
So that, I mean, that could be like land development or building or anything that, anything that would require a payment come to Fannin County, we can do that online.
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, cool.
All right, so efficiency basically is what we're looking at and, you know, it'd be an easier for, for the people who are doing this, for paying. Okay.
Thanks, Patrick.
Any discussion on this before we move forward?
Did we talk about warranty or how long the duration would last?
I like, it goes along with our accounting software that we are.
That we currently have.
Additional module that's required to be able to do that portion of it.
Okay.
So we have Casell now and we utilize them as just a different module?
It's a different type.
Yeah, allows us to be more efficient.
All right, good, matches up real good what we got, don't you?
All right. I'll ask for a motion that we sign into contract with Casell for this additional module to allow the payments online. I'll make that motion.
Motion.
Give a second?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Surgeon, second. All in favor? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you, Patrick.
All right, major part of the night as we know, public commentary. So anybody that would like to come up and speak, raise your hand, come up, tell us where you're from and tell us your name and where you're from, please.
My name is Mark Staley, I live on Highway Road in Morganton. And I am here to, well, actually I'm here on behalf of the Blue Ridge Community Theater. And I am here to, well, actually, I'm here on behalf of the Blue Ridge Community Theater to update the Board on what we're doing. And I know that tourism is a key driver to Fannin County. It truly is. We see that theater. And I am, I'm just not sure that the Commission is aware of what an asset our theater is to the county. We see it in our numbers. We are very visible for visitors that come into the county. You've seen our billboards around town. We're starting by advertising on some of these new souped-up automated billboards for our different plays to promote them, so the visitors see those. We run ads in the papers, well, they, they're a little magazine insert when it comes out. We run regular ads in the paper. And I don't know if you know it, but we also have theater brochures at the county, at the state lines for visitors that come in at all of the rest stops. So they see Fannin County at the various rest stops. And it seems that, you know, and we just had a strategic planning meeting this Saturday, and we were talking about the impact that the theater has on the county when it comes to tourism. So we said, let's, let's go make sure that we're all on the same page, and you understand the importance that we think we are important. You know, we really do. It seems like, you know, the art center, we know, and outdoor activities are a big focal point for people coming into Fannin County. And there's county support for that, and that's a good thing. But we think that the theater is just as much a tourist thing as anything else in this county. And like, we just saw, reading some of our statistics Saturday, and I was surprised at this, and I've been on the board for several years now, that we saw 1%, that 67% of our patrons that come into the theater are non-residents, which was a surprise, because we, Pat Webb keeps really good metrics of what's going on. My whole point here is to tell you that we believe that the theater is a tourism asset for this county. And we'd like for you to consider us when you start dispersing tourism taxes as, as an asset that we are. Like, our next, like, another thing is, I'm, I get around and I go down to Lawrenceville to the Aurora Theater, and we've done some homework from some of the other community theaters around the state and even out of state. And the ones that are ultra-successful and bring in the most people for tourism and just in general culture for the county have the support of city and county government. And matter of fact, in Lawrenceville right now, the Aurora Theater has taken over a huge block of the Court Square with the support of the county, and they're building a performing arts center there. And the theater is the main, there is the main component of that. But that is a theater group that has paid actors, and we're all volunteers, so we're not looking to say we're that kind of scope. I don't think we ever want to be, quite honestly. We, I'm one of those people that believes that you need to know what you are and just be good at what you are and maintain that kind of quality. And I went on Trip Advisor this afternoon, kind of getting prepared for this. I encourage you to go look at Trip Advisor and see what it says about your theater. We are five stars all the way. One of them I read, and I wrote it down so I could say it. Someone from out of state that comes here to visit says, "We are a gem in the North Georgia mountains." We always see a show when we visit, and we highly recommend you do that. So I'm saying to you guys, there are complimentary tickets for you and your spouses. The next play begins November 18th, runs through December 12th, and Sunday matinee. Come see a play and let us show you the facility that's in this county that I bet you are not aware of the scope of what it does.
What's that date?
Begins November 18th and runs through the 12th, on the week, on December 12th, weekends. And the phone number for the theater is 706-632-9191. When they answer the phone, that's the ticket line. It opens at 1:00. Tell this and who you are, and you will promise two tickets each and four if you want. We'd like to show off that theater.
I'll give you eight.
Joe is more magnanimous tonight. What is the price?
I think we're like, what, $24?
It's 25 regular, 21 for seniors, students, and active military are $10. All students at UNG come free as student activities. All Habitat families, all, basically, the care families, all the foster families, all of them literally can come to anything at the theater free. We support all those organizations with participation.
Yeah, you know, and those of you that are familiar with the theater know that we have seven main stage programs a year, really high-end considering you have volunteers doing this. Trip, the Trip Advisor reviews will tell you that. We have children's theater in the summertime that is extremely successful. And most of those kids there are on scholarships, somebody donating the money for them to come to summer camp. And they put on two plays. We're, we're at that cycle of theaters, and it's 20th year this past year. We're seeing some of those kids that were sunny D kids at four and five years old coming back now from college as interns for the theater, and we're working with North Georgia College so they can start to get college credits for showing up at the theater and, and working. It's just a tremendous program, and it deserves the support of the county, but quite honestly, it just doesn't get right now. There's just a lot going on there. I think, I'm gonna speak to Joe, we have 365 days a year, and how many days a year, Joe, is somebody at the theater doing something?
We have 160 performances a year. We're live 46 weeks a year, so we are live entertainment.
Yeah, and we're, now we're bringing in live music to fill in those nights that the main stage or the children's theater is not available on the main stage. We've got 177 seats that are theater seating. There's not a bad seat in the house.
So on a non-COVID year, just kind of help me understand, how many patrons would you normally get per year?
Oh, Lord.
Joe?
We had 11,000 patrons in 2019. That's sort of our benchmark for right now. With COVID, we obviously, instead of 170 seats, we have 40 seats. We also didn't put on performances for young.
And we cut back to five shows instead of seven during that period when we opened back up so we could transition it, even though we were comfortable in doing all the safety protocols. Our demographic tends to be an older group. We knew they would be slow coming back, so we just kind of said, let's grow as they decide to be safe and come back. And we're starting to see that trend really start to spike up now, with people coming, because people are coming back to the county now with the cabin rentals and just vacations. I have a lot of people in Atlanta that, that call me and say, can I get a cabin? And I said, you didn't get one already. You're not gonna get one. There's, you know, there's a lot of demand here for that. But just to quit talking to you right now, but our goal is to grow, to sustain our main stage. Children's theater, live music, can do it for another 20 years and pass that. We want to sustain bringing culture to this county. We have the different board members, we have what we call the theater speech. Before each play, one of us comes out and says, "Welcome, glad to see you," those kind of things. And I always like to tell, on my mind to do that, that welcome to a night of culture in Blue Ridge, because that's really what it is. It truly is. That's it. So thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
May I ask a question? Do we have budget hearings scheduled yet? That's the only public comment I want to make yet. Do we have any budget hearings?
We've already completed those?
Wait, not hearings, work sessions.
Work sessions.
Work sessions, the work sessions.
The budget hearing will be probably November 30th, if we can work it out then.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Sorry, Joe, my bad.
No problem. Try to keep up with the next meeting.
The hearing.
Potato, potato, hearing, work session.
It'll be advertised in the paper.
Oh, I understand.
They work in front of you, they have my own schedule. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, we'll close the public commentary. Do we have a need for executive session this evening?
I don't have one. I'd just like to make a quick comment.
Sure, absolutely.
I think I can say this for my fellow commissioners, and we would be remiss without talking or saying something about a very, very special group of people we have here in the county this week. As most of you know, Veterans Day, and they have sacrificed for us. I know all of you have thought about it. Probably have many of you here that have family members that have been veterans in the past. But we, as commissioners, appreciate their service and what they've done for our country. And that just really means a lot to us as commissioners. Would y'all like to say anything?
I was, I was in the veterans parade, and it was an honor to lead that and just be out there and recognize them, you know, because our freedoms come from their sacrifices, so. It was just an honor to be in it, and thank you for mentioning it, Mr. Powers.
Absolutely. I had a grandfather who was a POW for 33 months in Korea. And I remember one night, we were sitting there late one night, and he just, he felt like he needed to tell me about it. And I might put him in 12 years old, but I just remember that like it was yesterday, and I'll never forget what he told me. And that's the only time he ever mentioned it, the only time. He just needed to get it off his chest. I am the one he told to, so can't imagine, once we have fought, I can't imagine what they went through. Don't want to, to be honest with you. But like you said, the sacrifices they make for our country, where we can sit here and, and be able to agree or disagree on certain things. If, if we want to, we, we need to think better and afford that, and we always need to remember that. And, you know, we always kind of look for positive and negative.
Right.
And, and there's so much negative in the world. Let's, let's, let's do our best to look for that positive and remember the ones that have given us those rights for those positives.
That's right.
So we're thankful for all our veterans, and I appreciate you bringing that up as well.
Do we have any veterans here or family members of veterans?
Just, well, please stand up.
Two later in the US Army, thank you.
Thank you.
Boots off track.
I was Vietnam. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all's services, come on. We really do.
And the schools are putting on programs this week, starting tomorrow.
Awesome. If you get a chance, maybe we can attend some of those as well. Anyone else? All right, you have no need for executive session?
No, sir.
Nor do I, so I'll make the motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?